Morning guys, it is Monday and I am getting ready to record some videos. Actually, I think I'm just gonna record one. I wanted to record two, but the second one I still don't have fully mapped out yet. So I want to at least record one because it needs to go up today. I'm usually, I said this in my last video, I think, I usually do not do this where I'm creating videos like the day or the day before they go up. But three videos a week is no joke and I really thought it was important to take yesterday off because if you watch my last week of my business, the whole week was pretty busy. It was a lot of fun busy, like it wasn't so much work busy, but I was just running around doing things and I really wanted like a full day off. So here we are. My skin is so dry. I've been forgetting to put my humidifier on and then also because I've been wearing masks so that I've actually been leaving my house. Um, yeah, I had been breaking out and my skin's dry, so it is what it is. The show must go on. Alright, I'm gonna zhuzh up this hair and let's go film. Vlog section is happening, so this is how I film by myself. This iPad was honestly such a good purchase. I never understood the purpose of an iPad until I started using it for this camera connection app. It is quite impressive for this use, so I'm gonna film this social media manager Q and A. So it's about 12:50. I'm gonna edit until 2:00 when my call is. And I figured I would give you a little update on the Nespresso. I've been showing it, haven't really talked about it. I'm not sure how I feel about it yet. I don't know, maybe I'm just like a boring American who needs boring American drip coffee. It's good, but I, I think the trick is that I have not found my ideal coffee yet. I've tried this kind, it's the Solelio, Solelio? And then this one, which is the Melozio. So the Solelio is like really light and it's okay. The other one is a little too harsh almost. I don't know, I just feel like I haven't found the right one. So we still have our old bed frame just sitting here. It's actually kinda nice because I have a nice little tripod right here. Ooh, there we go. But um, we gotta figure out what to do with it. I don't wanna just like throw it away because it's, it's like a year old. It's pretty new and in pretty good condition. So obviously we wanna donate it somewhere, but a lot of places aren't taking donations because of so hopefully it will be gone in the next couple of days, but um, until then, you guys are just gonna have to deal with like stuff everywhere. And I'm gonna have to deal with stuff everywhere, stuff everywhere, stuff everywhere. Oof, what's that? Ah, boy. How is that for perfect timing? I got done with the first round of my edits and it is 1:51. There's exactly nine minutes till my call, so I'm gonna go grab my laptop, um, take this sweater off. I literally am double sweatered up because I'm so cold. And get a glass of water and then hop on this call. So my editing routine is I usually do like two to three rounds of edits just because my first round is cuts, so I just cut the footage, cut out the ums, the ahs, the mess ups, you know? And then second round, I usually add in like graphics and stuff. So this is a Q and A, so I'm gonna add the questions in, visual questions. And then I usually go through one last time just for any cleanups, you know, making sure that everything is blended really smoothly and adding like if there's an intro, outro, those elements. So yeah, I'm about one-third of the way done, so I should be done with this video around five or so. I just wanna say, I was reviewing today's clips and I think it's hilarious that I was like, "Yeah, I'm gonna be done around five with my editing" and I was done exactly at five with my editing. It's like weird after you do something for so long, you can literally predict like on the nose. But I'm just, um, Norris and I watched like 90 Day Fiance, ate dinner, just chilled. I was pretty much clocked out around like 5:30, 6:00. Um, but I'm in bed now and I just felt like whipping out the laptop and I think I'm going to work on a presentation, a webinar presentation. I'm gonna do a little webinar next week for the Freelance Friday Club just because I feel like, uh, I just wanna start talking about it. I haven't really like launched it with anything. It's just been kind of like a slow launch trying to get the old members over to the new platform and I think it's, it's time. So I'm gonna host a little webinar. I'm basically repurposing the ones that I used for my last launch with the social media management toolbox. So just gonna work on that for a little bit, not too long, and then probably watch a couple YouTube videos and go to bed. So I'll talk to you guys tomorrow. Good morning, happy Tuesday. Well, it's actually afternoon and my house is still a mess. We already discussed that, so I won't dwell on that. Let me get my coaster. So today is my CEO day of the week. I've been scheduling these for the past couple of weeks and basically my CEO days are days where I have no calls, no meetings, no appointments, no nothing. And I just have the day free to send invoices, do paperwork, do, you know, those tasks that like I've been meaning to get to and just haven't had time to. Do staffing stuff, what else? Um, just take the day to rest if I need it, you know? Like I feel like I've been having to schedule rest, so that's what today is. Last night I showed you guys that I started that deck for my webinar, so I'm gonna work on that today. But before that, I think I'm gonna move my email platform over to Flowdesk. So I've been using Mailer Lite for the longest time and it is a really good tool. I do really like it, so I still like recommend it. But I, I have like over 10,000 subscribers on my email list, which is a good thing and I'm grateful and I want to keep them. But Mailer Lite has like a tiered pricing, so it starts out being free and being a really good value when you're just building a list because you don't have to pay for it at all. But then once you hit, I think it's over 2,000, I could be wrong here, but then you have to start paying. And then now I'm up to the point where I'm paying $50 a month for Mailer Lite. But anyway, Flowdesk, I have a 50% off code because I got referred by somebody, so it's $19 for unlimited. So I'm like trying to figure out if there's a catch and if there's not a catch, I think I'm gonna go for it because that's obviously a much better value. And I will leave my code if anyone is in a similar position and also wants to get that 50% off. I'm pretty sure I get a code as well, so I'll leave that down below if you're interested. But yeah, so I'm working on switching over to that, building out a landing page for the webinar. And then the last thing that I'm gonna do is finish the webinar slides. This is also a little bit ambitious of me. I'm not sure if I'm actually gonna get to all these things today, but I also bought a new Squarespace theme on Black Friday and I have not even touched it. I don't even know. Hopefully I get time to work on that today, but um, yeah, it's just gonna be a workday for me, so. Let's get to it. And of course, oh, ow, that really hurt. Wow. Okay, this is like hot off the press, literally. It's good though. I'm so upset with myself. I do this all the time. I'm like, "Oh, it's just gonna be easy. It's just gonna be like this quick little thing." And then I'm like, "You know what I should do? I should do a workbook. I should do a workbook and set the automation so that they can download the workbook before the webinar." And it's a great idea. Don't get me wrong. It's a brilliant idea. I love when webinars do that because it feels like a true experience, like I'm really getting my value. And I'm gonna do it, but man, did I just slow my day down, but it's cool. Like again, this is the purpose of the CEO days because these are things that I just would not have got done. Like if I had, was doing this around meetings, I would have just thrown up the most simple landing page and, and called it good. And there's a time and a place for that. There really is. Like sometimes you just need to get things done, keep things moving. But I'm really trying to make this good, so that's what I'm gonna be doing. Took a little mail break and I have ordered more Sage Wellness this year than ever before. I actually discovered Sage Wellness right as lockdown was starting, as the border was closing, on our Toronto trip, which I talked about in my last vlog. So I just got an order in and you know, it's like, I'm not one of those people who number one believes essential wiggles can fix everything. No, go to the doctor if you need to, but they do just make you feel nice. And I feel like being in lockdown and you know, being in our houses so much in 2020, I've just really been wanting to like curate nice spaces for myself. So I got the good old Clean Hands, which is the best smelling hand soap I've ever used in my life. I got Eucalyptus. Eucalyptus is great. I like to diffuse a little bit of this when I'm sleeping and it just makes me not as stuffy and all of that stuff. Also, if you're sick or anything, doing a little steam with that is nice. And then this is that stuff. This is called Fortify in Canada. It's called Immune. And I got a little roll-on of it. It is like, you can rub it on your neck if you have a sore throat or if you have a cough. You can rub it on your chest, kinda like Vicks Vapor Rub in a way. Um, you can rub a little bit under your nose. I diffuse it too. I don't know if you're really exposed to, but I do. Cinnamon oil, eucalyptus, tea tree, peppermint, rosemary. It is so nice. So I got a roll-on slash a diffuser thing of it and a nasal inhaler. So I am excited to, I'm excited. I love these things. And no, I am not sponsored by Sage. I wish I was. I tag them all the time and they want nothing to do with me. So I'm just sharing because I like these things and they're nice little treats. Morning everyone. It is Wednesday and it's nine o'clock pretty much on the dot. So every Wednesday or every day that I upload a new video, it's kinda my routine to watch it on my TV just because sometimes you see things on the TV that you didn't notice, you know, on a small screen. So I always like to double check it right as it goes live in case I need to pull it down or add anything to the description box, or I also use that time to like respond to the comments while I'm watching. So I'm gonna do that, drink my coffee, and then I will be outlining my video for today. Again, I've been on this like day-to-day, week-to-week kinda routine for my videos. Normally I'm way ahead, but it is what it is. So I'm gonna be recording Friday's podcast today on Wednesday, so I'm gonna outline that episode um, this morning and then get ready and start shooting. Alright, one of those days where everything's ticking forever. I also have a weird question. For anybody who wears glasses, do you feel like there are days where your eyesight is worse? Because like I'm having one of those days today where I can't see and I don't know if that's something I like need to go to the doctor for or if that's normal. And I happen to wear my glasses today. I'm not wearing them right now because I have makeup on, blah, blah. I know, whatever. Okay. So yeah, I'm gonna set up to film the podcast now. I think this is gonna be the last podcast of 2020. Oh yeah, this is the last podcast of 2020. Cause I don't think I'm gonna put one up on Christmas on the 25th, which is a Friday, so this is the last one. Done filming and I'm just making a little late lunch. It's like 2:30 and I'm so hungry. I was like, "Duh, it's 2:30 and you haven't eaten yet." I wanted to read the comment of the vlog though. I think this is fun. Maybe I'll keep up with it, doing it in the week of my business videos. But I got so many nice ones on this last vlog. I talked about wanting to move to Toronto and just kind of talking about it like in passing and as sort of like this random pipe dream of mine. And there were so many that were like so encouraging. Samantha writes things as a Tor- Torontonian. Is that how you say it? A Torontonian. "When I first found your channel, I was surprised to see you weren't from here. You have such a Toronto vibe about you. I think it's a good omen for the future." Thank you so much. Does Samantha have a channel? She does. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to check out Samantha's videos and I'll link it down below. But yeah, there were many comments that were like, "Oh my gosh, get an apartment in Toronto. Like do it. You can totally do it." And it's just like, it's just funny because I feel like I put a limit on myself. Like, I don't know, it's a different country and like, it just seems so hard. And it's like, Latasha, owning your own business seemed like a hard thing, you know? And don't get me wrong, obviously Norris has a job here, so that's like our, we're, we're definitely staying here. But why can't I dream really big? Why can't I have a second apartment? Or you know, someday if the stars align and he's able to work remote or he gets a different job or something like, you know, you never, you never know where life takes you. And I guess it was just like a little vote of confidence that I needed to hear that it wasn't such a wild idea. And I don't know, yeah, I was just been thinking about like the limits we put on ourselves, you know? Like I'm only 30, not even 30 yet technically. Sometimes you just need to hear that encouragement to be like, "Okay, maybe I can put that on my list as like a 10-year goal, a five-year goal, whatever, part-time goal." And then Norris and I were talking, I was like, "What if I could have the Jameson Park offices, Detroit, Toronto, Paris?" And I could just spend my time traveling around the three. Ah, a girl can dream, right? We gotta dream. So thanks for the encouragement, guys. Alright, so now the real work part of the workday begins. I, well, okay, so I'm getting on a call right now with my mastermind group. Not the Honeybook one, but the one that I actually pay for every month and I've been in for a year. And I re-enrolled for the second year. Maybe I'll talk about that, um, and how I came to that decision later on. Somebody's complaining in the mastermind group. Oh, there's drama. But I feel like I should join the call today because it's like vision casting and all this stuff. I don't really know if I need to be on camera, but I just feel like I should join just in case, you know? I wanna, I wanna really like be in it this year, like and actually attend all the things, which I didn't this year. Uh, so I'm doing that. Then in an hour, I have a coaching call and then I have another coaching call and then I have another coaching call. So it's gonna be like a long evening, but I'm excited. I'm like, I love all the people who I'm working with today. But I just got a Slack message from one of my clients. I only have like one, like full-service client right now, um, otherwise everything else is just coaching. And when I got that Slack, I realized I forgot to do something. It's not like an emergency, but it kinda stressed me out, so now I gotta figure out, I need to get that done like tonight. So it's gonna be a long night, but let me hop on this call. God, it's starting right now. It's starting this second. Oh, okay. Bye. Okay, no, it's just a webinar. I don't have to participate, so that's good because I can kinda tune in while she's talking and also get work done, which I shouldn't be doing. I don't recommend. But it's kind of an emergency because like I said, I got that Slack and it lit a fire under my butt, so. Alright, so I had one coaching call at four. It's now 6:12 and I think I'm being stood up for my next one. I just sent her a DM. I don't know if she forgot. Hi, I think I'm gonna hop off in like two minutes because I can get 45 minutes of work done before my next call. If she doesn't show up, I just wanna double check and make sure she's on my calendar. Alright, so I'm gonna get off. She hasn't seen the message and she hasn't hopped on, so 13 minutes late. It's usually a good buffer. I think I have written into the contract 10 minutes, but I like to give it 15. So I am going to work on my video then, my podcast that needs to go out on Friday. I'm going to go ahead and put the clips together and at least get the ball rolling on that. So it's Thursday and my eye, this eye really hurts if you, if I look strange. I wanted to say, when I say I'm not feeling good, I'm not looking for sympathy. Last vlog, I was not in, in any way trying to complain. I'm just trying to let you guys know why I'm being weird in the vlogs. And I was thinking about this the other day and I'm curious what you have to say, Norris. Like, would you say that the majority of your days, you feel good, like you feel normal?
Emotionally or physically?
Physically.
Physically, yes.
Okay.
Yes, physically, most days I feel fine.
Cause for me, like my whole life even since- Hold on, I gotta, oh gosh, I'm spilling coffee. For me, like my whole life, even when I was a kid, I just feel like the majority of the days, I don't feel great. Like either my head hurts or my stomach hurts or something doesn't feel right. So anyway, I'm not saying that to like make you guys feel bad. I just tell you, "Oh, I have a headache today" to let you know why I'm being weird in the vlog or why I'm not vlogging.
You think it could be like an existential thing where like something emotionally is manifesting into a physical sort of-
No, anyway, we are going to Best Buy and I will vlog there. That's all I wanted to say.
Did you tell them the good news about your car?
Oh yeah, I paid off my car. I didn't even like honestly realize that I was still paying on it. I, I don't know, I just like this whole pick and stuff, like I just like don't know what's going on. But I got an email and I was like, "Congratulations, your car's paid off." So I own this thing now, so that's cool.
How awesome is that? I'm so proud of you. Not just because of that, but I'm so proud of all the things that you've done over the year and it's been a tough year for everybody and I'm just super proud of you and what you're able to accomplish in 2020, even though it's been tough.
Well, he, I'm proud of him because he is on vacation.
Yeah, y'all gonna see a lot of me.
Oh gosh, and he deserves it. He works really hard, so we're off to Best Buy to get a little something. And some lunch, hopefully. This one's cute too, but like I wouldn't want, you know-
Gold.
That wrote, but it's pretty. Gonna get a new MacBook. It's an exciting day. I heard this video processor, this um, i5 processor is like, wait, is that the newest one or no?
No.
So they don't have that? It is much, much later in the day. It's 10 o'clock. I got home probably, we probably got home around like three or four at the latest. And I took a nap. I told you guys that I had a headache. And good news, the headache is gone, but bad news, I literally woke up at 8:00 PM. So I slept like the entire day, but I didn't mention to you earlier that all my meetings canceled on me today, which is fine. Um, I kind of, it was nice to have like the day off with Norris. He's on vacation now, got my new computer. And clearly I needed some rest, but I edited yesterday, or my episode for tomorrow. I edited, edited, it, I edited most of it yesterday, but I just need to like finish up a couple of quick things and make the thumbnail for it, so I'm doing that right now. And just kind of spent some time since I got my new computer. I'll show you guys more when I'm like looking better and have better lighting up, but it's really cool to have a new computer. I haven't had, um, this, this iMac. This was my first new Apple product. And actually my laptop that I use is refurbished, so it was never new to me. I mean, it was still new to me, but it's cool. It's like a nice little tree and it's definitely, there's, there's so many features that I already love about it, so I'll tell you guys more about it later. But I'm just gonna edit this and then drink some tea, have a little snack, take a shower and get to bed. So I'll talk to you guys tomorrow. I'm going to get on my last Honeybook Upward Pod meeting, which I'm a little bit sad about. It was like a really fun group and it was just a really good experience. So if you ever got the opportunity to join this, um, I'd recommend it. That's all I'm gonna do. Got my coffee, had some oatmeal, got some water. Let's do this. My brain and my office are both a mess right now. So every time I get off these mastermind calls, they're great. They're fantastic. To those of you who are in my pod, you guys are awesome. I love you guys. It was such a good experience and this is why I'm so passionate about having a community, joining a mastermind. It's really important. But my mind gets racing. I get so many good ideas and then I have work to do still. So I have a call in 30 minutes and I'm like, "Oh my gosh, I wish I could just implement." So I'm gonna lock myself away after my next call. I'm going to set up my whiteboards right here. Norris is bringing me lunch because he's bay. And I'm gonna work through some of this stuff and I'm gonna show you guys what I'm gonna work through. And we're gonna have a little work session and hopefully the momentum is still there after my call. This is the problem, like I need to not schedule any meetings after these calls because I just get so many ideas, so many ideas. Okay, I really hope you guys can hear me because I changed the microphone to a little lapel microphone just so you're, the microphone, whatever, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. You guys are on a different microphone. So there's a couple of things that I wanna really work on today. And I wanna work on basically these three things over here. Simplifying my offers, raising my rates, but simplifying my offers, simplifying my offers. This is what I wanna work on today. I feel like there are so many different ways that people can engage with me and work with me and it's just not clear. If you guys haven't read the book, Building a Story Brand, that's kind of the framework that I've been using and that I've been teaching in my membership group, the Freelance Friday Club. We did a book club on it. It was really fun, but I have not been implementing it enough into my own stuff. And I haven't been being clear enough with people on how they can work with me. And to be honest, I've just been kinda doing whatever people want. And I really need to productize my offers so that people, it's very clear. It's very easy for me to quote. I'm not having weeks where I just have so much anxiety and a pit in my stomach about creating some custom proposal. It needs to be all added into Honeybook, boom, boom, ready to go. This is what you get. I'm not doing custom stuff anymore. We'll talk about raising the rates a little bit later. I got some good advice from one of my pod members today on pricing. I'm also reading a book on pricing and he also gave me some additional resources on pricing, so I'll probably come back to that next week. Maybe we can do another work session on that. But I wanna talk about my offers first and foremost. So there's two different sides of my business. There is Jameson Park, which is the agency, Latasha James, which is this, coaching courses, et cetera. Right now, Jameson Park is basically everything. We all, we do full-service social media. We do content, branded content, okay, backwards, but whatever. Those are like the main things I would say that we're doing. Me personally, I offer one-on-one coaching, three-month, one-on-one power hours, which is hidden. Only certain people know about that because I don't advertise it. One-to-many group, the Freelance Friday Club. They have self-paced courses. Why am I getting so many emails? Why is this happening? I need a, I need a, first of all, I need to mute this. Oh, by the way, did I mention my client didn't show up? Just got a coaching inquiry. Self-paced courses and YouTube and stuff. I'm not gonna write that. So what I wanna do is I really need to simplify this. There's too much going on. And although these things are all currently profitable, well, except for the membership group. The membership group, we have not hit profit, pro, pro, oh my gosh, can I speak please? Profitable, 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 um, I guess profitable, profitable, not profitable yet. Do I believe it can be? Yes. But right now I am spending money on the Freelance Friday Club for hosting, for the, having a community manager for my own time. Um, so we'll see on that if that stays into 2022, but it's definitely gonna stay until 2021. Okay. What I wanna do now is in terms of volume, the amount of inquiries that I'm getting for full-service social, I would say a three. Basically, I'm turning everybody down. Everybody who comes to me for full service, actually, I'll guess I'll put that a four. I'm turning everybody down. I'm not working with anyone full service because it takes too much time and I'm too busy with these other things. Branded content, I'm at like a two. Like I have one long-term retainer client who is signing on for next year. So that's gonna be a good amount of revenue coming in early in the year for like Q1, but then after that, I don't have a lot going on. So it's something that I really enjoy doing as well. So I'm gonna put that as a two as something that I want to focus a little more on. One-on-one coaching, I'm also turning people down and not overwhelmed in a bad way, but like I'm at capacity. So if I can take on more people, I need, something's gotta change or there's gonna be a waitlist. Power hours are at a five. I don't even have them advertised because I'm too, they get too busy. And self-paced courses, I'm not really gonna put anything because they don't really require any effort. They do, there's a couple of things that we're gonna change in the new year. We're gonna revamp my signature course, the Journey Social. That's high on the priority list. You know, more emails, stuff like that, billing issues, whatever, but for the sake of this, whatever. And then this one, I would say is pretty, I mean, right now it's like a two. Like there's not a lot of, uh, people signing up, so what does that mean? What I wanna do is I'm done with this. I'm done with full-service social. I am gonna do strategy and branded content, these two things right here. That's it. With exceptions, obviously, if it makes sense, if you're watching this and you like really wanna work with me, still hit me up. We'll see what we can do, but that's not gonna be what I'm advertising. Content is something that has a very high ROI for me, but the inquiries are a little bit lower. So what I need to do is I need to update the website slash portfolio and I need to build some packages. Because right now it's on a case-by-case. My retainer client, they came to me with the idea. I never, I was kinda like, "Sure, that amount of work sounds like it'd be this much." Strategy, I also need to do something similar. I do have a strategy package, but I need to refine packages and update. I mean, this is just for everything. I need to update the site. I need to refine the packages though. And then I guess I need to figure out an acquisition plan really because I just don't know. I just don't know yet. I don't know how I'm gonna pitch that or sell that, so I need to think on that. That's where we're at with that. That's what we're gonna do for Jameson Park. And then I think I also need to, I need to figure out what I'm doing as far as the people who do come for full service. I cannot just have them, I don't wanna just say no. So I do have a whole list of people who have taken my course, who are interested in freelancing. So maybe I need to figure out if they're still interested, qualify them and get some people to act as referral partners. I don't necessarily even think that I would like charge anything for that or that it would be, you know, a revenue-driving thing. But just so that people who do come to me, I'm not just leaving them in the dark and saying, "Hey, we don't do full service." Now for this, I really need to prioritize. The one-on-one coaching, I need to raise my rate, I think, which scares me because I've already raised it. I raised it last year. I either need to raise the rate or restructure. 2019, it was 1,300, three months. 2020, it was 1,500 for three months. I did some added value with workbook. I would do a little surprise and delight and send out a physical package most of the time, giving people access to courses for free if they needed them. So I did added value, surprise and delight style for this. I don't have a ton of people on my waiting list, but I just had someone apply today and I'm, I'm consistently getting applications and I'm not promoting it at all. When's the last time you guys heard me say, "Hey, if you wanna sign up for one-on-one coaching"? I, I literally never talk about it. People are self-finding it. for one-on-one coaching? I literally never talk about it. People are self-finding it, and they're still applying at that rate. $1,500 isn't really sustainable for me, because that's 500 a month per client. And in terms of workload, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it's two hours per month in meetings, and I would say at least two hours per month in like emails, Voxer, et cetera. So that's four hours, so 500 divided by four, I can't math, so let's do it. $125 per hour, which again, I know that that sounds really high, but it's not true, actually, because the added value, uh, just mailing out a package, the value of giving away courses, the, the, um, group program, at least 50 to 100 dollars, at least. So realistically, this is gonna be a little lower, let's say, 100 dollars an hour, 30% taxes, at least. So I'm making 70 dollars per hour, essentially, for each one-on-one package. Now, that's not terrible. It's not terrible, but when we go to my hourly rate calculator, which I'll link it down below, it's not great. To, to reach my goal in what I set as my standard hourly rate, it sounds high, but I would say I'm usually quoting 150 per hour to account for tax, staffing, um, materials, education. You gotta understand, for coaching, I'm also joining webinars, joining courses, uh, joining conferences. Content marketing world alone was like 1,500 dollars for the ticket. So this needs to go up. Yeah, I think that needs to be raised. All of this math, just to say, my rate needs to be raised. Do you guys see how hard this crap is? So that's one option, is I can raise that rate. I can then work backwards. I'm not gonna bore you guys with this, but what I can do is I can work backwards from this 125, one, let's just say it's 100. I could say, let me quote that. What is 150 an hour gonna be? Which would be, that would be 1,800. Is that manageable? 1,800, so I could say 2021, 1,800 for three months. Now, I want to go through my pricing psychology stuff, because there's a few things, like odd numbers, um, not doing straight numbers like that, like 1,800, doing, I can do 1749, I can do 1799, 17, something like that. So I'm gonna play around with this number, but I think that's kind of the target that I want to be at. And then from there, the other thing that I want to do is I want to do added value, and I want to explicitly show that. This has been added value, surprise and delight. I do it based on the need. So if, if we're talking about something, and they're like, I really needed to learn how to do Facebook ads, and I'm like, oh, cool, I have a course on that. I'll give it to you. So if you are one-of-way one-on-one clients, and you're in that position, just hit me up. Tell me what you need. I got you. But that's the style it's been. It's been surprise and delight. It hasn't been like a promised guaranteed part of the package. I think if I'm raising the rate to 1,800, or 1749, or whatever it is, I think I need to explicitly say what that added value is gonna be. I'm going on 20 minutes. This is gonna be a beast to edit. So the other thing, this is just the one-on-one. This is something to consider. I have these two other programs now. The group program, I'm just gonna tell you right now, is priced too low, and I know that. Uh, I know that. There's nothing I can do about it, though, because it's already, I'm not gonna change the rates for people, and I'm not, I don't know. I, that's not a bridge I'm willing to get to. Like I said, it's not even profitable yet, so I don't feel comfortable to raise the rate on that quite yet. Power hour, right now, is 197. And then I'm also introducing a new service that I'm deciding if I want to replace the power hour, which I think is what I'm gonna do. I think the power hour is gone. I think that's no longer a thing. I think I, I will keep it on for existing clients, or you know, if somebody booked a three-month package with me at 1,800, and they feel like they need a couple extra calls two months down the line, I think I'll still offer them the power hour. I think that's fair, because we've built up the relationship. The problem is a power hour isn't very effective if I don't know you, I don't have a relationship with you. It becomes just rapid-fire Q&amp;A, in which case you would be better off just to send in questions for a social media manager Q&amp;A, or to join my membership group, where we do office hours every single month. So full plug, if you guys want to ask me questions, you can join the membership for 37 dollars a month, and you get access to me once a month, just for Q&amp;A, once a month for a mastermind, and then day-to-day for text forum stuff. So I think I need to promote that as the option for power hour, and remove that. Then what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna do, so this is gone, Voxer CEO Day, which I haven't even talked to you guys about much. I need to figure out a rate for that. So if we are saying that based on this, essentially, this is not fully true, because you get so much added value. You get access to me, you know, five days a week through Voxer, through email, but let's just say, let's humor us and say that each call is basically 300 dollars. It's confusing, because you do get added value. So what people are gonna do with this number is they're gonna break it up, and they're gonna say, 1,800, I get six calls. That means I'm paying 300 dollars. They're getting added value, but that's just how people, that's just what people do. So let's just say, let's humor this and say 300 bucks. Realistically, in a one-hour call at that, realistically, I could probably make a CEO Day like 1,000 dollars. Not going to, because the target for this is really somebody who isn't ready, be it financially or whatever, for this package. The goal is to kind of funnel these people in from Voxer to a one-on-one program, or to a group membership. So I think it needs to be lower. I got feedback back from the three beta testers, and I think everybody said like 300-ish. So I think that's fair. So I think I'm gonna say like 350. I think that's where we're gonna start it. 350 for Voxer CEO Days. Those, and those are gonna be available only in limited quantities. I'm out of breath. That's where we're at. That's where we're at. I think that's what I need to do. So I'm going to work on, what did I just accomplish? Did I accomplish anything? My camera's blinking at me now, so I don't know what that means either. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna sit down with this now, and I'm gonna start working on some of this. I need to really get these packages updated for the agency, because I'm already getting inquiries for full-service work. It's not that I don't want to do it. It's not that I don't like doing it. It's not that I can't do it. It's that it's just no longer sustainable. With doing this stuff, with doing YouTube, with doing the podcast, which YouTube is finally becoming profitable for me after seven years, I feel like I need to act on those things. The courses are, at this point, this, these past two months, the courses have been my number two revenue stream after ongoing retainer clients. So I need to make sure that I have time to develop new courses, to do customer service, to do marketing. Like, I haven't marketed my courses, which is silly, because they're making money without me marketing them. So imagine what would happen if I did. So I need to leave time for that. Full service just isn't in the cards, at least for Q1. We can reevaluate, and if Q2 is like cricket land for coaching, crickets for courses, which could happen. I don't want it to, but it could, who knows? Then I can always turn full service back on. But I think that's what I need to do. So now I do it.